Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone. Thank you for joining us. Today is Monday, February 10th, 2014. This is a meeting of the Cedar Rapids Community School District Board of Education. And it seems like it's been quite a while since we've all been together. So I'm glad you could make it. Not everyone made it, but most people made it. We're going to go ahead and approve the agenda, but this is a revised agenda. We are pulling BA 14-194 from consent. And we are also going to reschedule our moment of silence. So Nancy, can you read that for me, please?
Sure. I move that the agenda of Monday, February 10th, 2014 Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
There a second, please?
Second.
Call action?
Director Laverty?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Witt?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
President Meisterling?
Aye.
Thank you. I'll now turn it over to Dave Benson for a superintendent report.
Good evening, everyone. We're glad you're out here on this nice Iowa evening in February. The winter season continues to challenge school districts. We have had five cancellations so far this year, and those make-up days under the current rules and regulations are posted on the website. There may be some alternatives coming forward in the next few days that might change what we end up doing. The Executive Director of the Department of Education, Dr. Buck, has taken some things under consideration with his administrative team in a meeting today, and we expect to hear more news on that. And what I am proposing for the board is that at the February 24th Board meeting, we have a general discussion around makeup, where we are, what we can do. If the guidance we're anticipating comes forward, the board will actually have to pass a resolution and make a determination for how days would be made up. So look forward in community. Please, let's hold on for a couple of weeks and see what the next round of Siberian blast, Arctic polar vortexes, or whatever they're going to call is -- will come. We do have cold conditions tomorrow, and I know this is going to be taped delayed, but we'll try to make decisions for the news this evening so people can make plans. We are currently inviting input from our parents, employees, and high school students as part of our annual climate survey. This is a critical part of the district's continuous improvement efforts. This feedback provides several opportunities for comment on various components of our educational system. Students will participate at their high schools. Parents and staff who did not receive a survey invitation by email can access it through the district's website. The survey is being administered by K-12 Insight, and all responses are anonymous, and the survey will remain open through February 20th. Next, we're looking forward to a new program opportunity. We're going to welcome lots of parents to the ELSC on March 7th for preschool and kindergarten registration. This will be the first time the district offers the registration for all schools in one central location. In addition to this announcement, media and online communication highlighting this event will go out. We also have a video message featuring some current kindergarten students that will be airing on cable channels and social media sites, so let's take a look.
We know you're out there. We are looking for a few good kindergartners and preschoolers for the 2014-15 school year. We really want you to sign up. Well, actually, we want your parents to sign you up. Yes, parents, you need to sign up your kindergartner or preschool student at the Educational Leadership and Support Center at 2500 Edgewood Road on March 7th, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Man, that's a lot of sevens.
The preschool program is offered to children who will be three or four years old before September 15th, 2014. Parents of preschoolers, you need to bring your child's birth certificate and proof of your income to sign up. For kindergarten registration, children need to be five years old before September 15th, 2014. Parents of incoming kindergarten students, you need to bring your child's birth certificate and proof of your residence to registration. If you have any questions about the March 7th registration event happening at the Educational Leadership and Support Center that's located at 2500 Edgewood Road Northwest and runs from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, please call the Office of Learning and Leadership at 319-558-2247.
Get your calendars, things, and your reminder set. We want to see you.
Never follow animal acts or children, but I want to continue with a serious announcement for anyone who needs transportation that day, anytime during the day. Please contact your local elementary school that you're closest to. We'll be glad to work something out to bring you up. This is a great opportunity because we will have all of the professional staff here that can answer your questions and help you with that. If it is absolutely not possible for you to make it that day, you can register at your local elementary school anytime after the 7th. A couple more things. I am pleased to share that the student team from Harding Middle School will represent the state of Iowa at the National Future Cities Competition again this year. This is the fourth year in a row that the team from Harding will represent Iowa at this national competition. Future Cities challenge middle school students to research and present solutions for various city problems. Several PAC students in all district middle schools participate in the program. The national competition will be held February 14th in Washington, DC. So congratulations to Harding Middle School students. Next, a group of area realtors visited the ELSC on February 4th for conversation and tour. We shared our new -- a new communication piece that is being finalized now, and we invited their input on that piece. We talked about the district's ongoing commitment for the redevelopment of the city's central core, as well as the growth areas that we are projecting in the school district. And finally, we're now have queued up another alumni spotlight video, so we'll show that.
We are pleased to spotlight Cedar Rapids Community School District alum, Dr. Brad Buck. Currently serving as Director of the Iowa Department of Education, Brad grew up in Cedar Rapids, graduating from Jefferson High School in 1987. During his years as a Jefferson Jayhawk, Brad was positively influenced by several faculty members, especially his chemistry and AP Biology teacher and his AP English teacher. Their interest in seeing him grow and succeed, both academically and as a person, shaped how he would later approach the classroom himself as a teacher. Said Brad, "I had a number of wonderful, thoughtful, and caring teachers as part of my Cedar Rapids experience, and I am proud to say I am a graduate of the system and of Jefferson in particular." It caused me to recognize the importance of the adage, "Students don't care how much you know until they know how much you care." Brad went on to earn an undergraduate degree in Biology from the University of Northern Iowa, and both a master's degree and PhD from Iowa State University. He taught middle school science before moving into roles in school administration, where he served as a principal, associate superintendent, and superintendent. In 2013, he was appointed by Iowa Governor Terry Branstad to serve as Director of the Iowa Department of Education. In his current role, Brad is recognized as an innovative leader and collaborator. He is keenly focused on helping Iowa's education system in a way that respects and supports both the individuality of Iowa communities and the vision and priorities set at the state level. Considering the many learning opportunities available to students today, Brad shared, "There are so many options available to students now to access technology and other digital learning experiences, including the Internet and smart technologies, which we didn't have access to before. There are also expanded options with community colleges, internships, school-to-work experiences, and more. In tandem with the access to potentially better information and experiences, however, is the ever-increasing reality that the high school diploma is not a finish line, but the gateway to the next learning experience." Brad and his wife Tracy are the proud parents of six children. The family is involved in numerous family activities, and Brad says he is a great fan of high school show choir. We congratulate district alum Dr. Brad Buck on his many personal and professional successes.
I feel like I want to clap. That was wonderful. Thank you. And that was a really cute video for preschool and kindergarten registration, so thank you for doing that. I know Marcia and Mark and Justin had a hand in that, so thank you. Board reports, any board reports at this time? Keith?
I did attend the conference board meeting last week. There's a lot of changes that occurred as of July 1, 2013, in the way real estate is going to be taxed. And as more of those develop, I'll let you know about them, or if you want to talk individually about it, I'd be glad to share a lot of the changes that are occurring. But it will be a significant change.
Maybe you can summarize that for us in the upcoming months. Is the state going to make up the difference in property tax?
Well, that's what they claim. And, you know, this is the first year and the first round, and quite frankly, commercial property owners had to essentially register their properties. It wasn't known how many would, and then some money gets prorated out of that. And so there's a lot of things up in the air. All properties that have people living in them now will be classified as residential, where before a lot of them were commercial. So that's a significant change, and it will change our tax base.
So maybe Steve can cover that in an upcoming budget session. Okay, thank you. Yes, John?
Just wanted to report out that I did have the chance to visit schools in the district in the last couple of weeks. So I've done elementary, middle school, and high schools, and proud to say that the silo money that's been going into, for instance, Jefferson High School is doing amazing things. And Chuck McDonald over there took me around and showed me the new cafeteria and windows and heating and cooling, and the teachers I talked to are so proud of their new classrooms, better lighting, better environments for teaching kids. So I think bravo to everyone who, you know, worked on all of those projects. The elevators in some of our middle schools and elementary schools that got put in are architecturally just amazing, and Shive Hattery and all involved with that did an awesome job. And yet, at the same time, I'll just go back to the pebble I saw, tuck pointing. We had just painted one building, and already some of the paint was starting to bubble, and some of the beautiful ornate things that are around the windows is cracking because water's getting underneath there. So when people want to know, again, what the pebble tax funds, it's those critical things with keeping our buildings structurally sound for many years, carpeting, roofs, and that sort of thing. So I heard pretty much universal praise, too, for Rob and the work that he and his staff are doing. So congratulations to Rob and doing a great job out there in the buildings. The teachers and the principals appreciate all of that, and also facilities and the warehouse and the printing department, I think we're doing a good job here, and I heard that through all of the buildings. So, good job.
Great, thank you. Any other reports or comments from the board? Okay, I just have a few. One, if you haven't seen the Polk Elementary video, well, it's not elementary, it's an alternative school now. I really encourage you to see that. Mark Benezick did a nice job of representing the organizations that are currently providing services at that building to the entire neighborhood. So it's really, it's a really wonderful partnership that we have. I also want to thank Buildings and Grounds Department for the Green Team and the Green Team Initiative and Dashboard. Very impressed with the progress that we're making. Obviously, we can save a lot of money, so our board encourages you to be aggressive in that regard. Dave, two things for you. One is the climate survey. I had a few people at work just today tell me that there's a glitch, and they get a certain, in a certain spot, and then they can't move on. So if someone could take a look at that software, and a couple people had tried to complete that three or four times and hit that same glitch spot. So maybe look at that. Or Lori, I should, I guess I should address that to you. And then, Dave, I wonder if you could comment on the minutes versus days that we're talking about for school districts? I don't know if the word's fully aware of it, but I think it's something that I'd like to have a little bit more information on, and certainly your perspective.
Sure, I'm glad to. Minutes versus days in terms of a decision, we will have to certify that our calendar next year is being managed under the philosophy of counting hours or counting days. This is new to the state of Iowa, and it is coming in effect for the 14-15 school year. It is not in effect this year. Otherwise, we could potentially control our own, quote, "fix" for some of the weather-related issues in terms of hours. I have served in superintenances under the hours versus days, and it's 180 days or 1,080 hours. And the official time has been increased per day from five and a half hours to six and a half hours for the instructional day. There are some other legislative matters that need to be cleaned up before we can have a final discussion of this. But what you should know at this time is this decision of hours versus days also relates to school calendar issues, and it relates to contract issues. We have 180 days of instruction in our teacher's master agreement, for example, which is a negotiated issue, and we have time constraints during the day that we can utilize for instruction in accordance with those agreements. So that all has to balance and work in consort with our agreements. Trace Pickering is doing an outstanding job of working with our CIAT committee. We've really expanded that committee, and one of the things that we will ask him to do later this spring is to have a discussion with that representative group of individuals, I think we may be 56 or 57 of those now, around how key elements of a contract relate to each other, and what are the priorities. We can build a calendar if we know what the community priorities are. So we're going to ask the CIAT committee to have that discussion and give us some feedback around what they believe should be priorities. For example, is it really a community priority to have the week of Thanksgiving as a non-attendance week? Or could we go to school Monday, Tuesday, or Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, have an early out, for example? Those are the kinds of things that we need guidance on in order to build an effective calendar. The other issue that plays in the calendar in our case is the issue around semesters versus trimesters. We have calendars established for next year based on our trimester system. They may need to be tweaked based on the input that we get, but if we can go to a semester system, we might be able to better coordinate things like spring break with our college and university community. We traditionally, as a school district, don't have the same break as the universities, and for a lot of our people, that creates a real conflict. They're off one week for their employment, may be off the next week for their children. So there's some real issues around calendar that we're going to examine, and that's all tied up in this hours versus days. So that's a long-winded explanation to say, "We're going to have to get back to you in the spring after we get some of these things worked out." Typically, in my experience, I've certified hours, we count hours, but we stay on our day schedule so that we can get the school year in, in terms of the days. And under our current system, we believe we are over at all three areas over the 1080-hour rule in terms of hours within our 180-day school calendar that we maintain right now. I hope that helps. It is kind of an interesting discussion because there's a lot of issues that play into that final decision.
Okay, I just want to clarify that the CIAT committee is the School Improvement Advisory Committee, and I also want to clarify that the conversation regarding trimester or semester would be for the 15-16 school year, not the 14-15 school year, so I don't want anyone to feel misled. And lastly, you have some students here. You sure you don't want to give them a tip as to what they're going to do tomorrow morning when it's 22 below? Sorry, I was just kidding. Okay, up is consent agenda and us for a motion in a second. We'll follow with discussion, and if there's going to be something that's going to be pulled, we'll amend the motion. So can I hear a motion, please? Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? Before we do that, I do have a request from the public to address the board. It's from Larry Winkowski. Sorry about that, Larry. Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
That goes under NBA rules, no blood, no foul. Lawrence Winkowski, 4234 Morel Road, Northeast Cedar Rapids. What I'm going to say applies to the school board and the superintendent's cabinet, as I don't want to be accused of singling out any individuals. No matter how much I prepare, I find addressing people in this setting is very uncomfortable. When I attend these meetings and raise concerns or make comments about different topics, these concerns or comments are not a result of things that come to my mind while doing LSD and listening to Pink Floyd. My perception is a result of life experiences, conversations that have taken place with you and others, along with your decisions, actions, and the way business has been conducted by the school board and administration over the past years. By growing up in Chicago and attending Chicago Public Schools, I have seen and experienced things that I don't want others to go through, as well as we all are better served without sharing some growing pains. My oldest daughter started school in a suburban suburb that provided a foundation for her excellent education. All these experiences, along with my understanding of the facts as I know them, go into my perception of a topic. I believe the basis for perception is similar for everyone who comes before you. Over the years, I have had many constructive conversations and discussions with individuals covering many topics, especially over the last several months. However, over the same period, I have received commitments that were not followed through on, been told one thing only to see another thing happen, been beaten up as the messenger, been patronized, and have had phony responses to my concerns. These incidences also impact my perception. A few people have even stooped low enough to bring my children into it by belittling their accomplishments, and someone even threw a book at one of my daughters as a result of a question I raised at one of your meetings. I will no longer be nice to anyone who belittles or retaliates against my children, especially if the action is a result of my attendance or participation at any, at this or any other meeting. I know my experiences within the district are not unique. Lately, you've humored me. At times, some of you act like catty juveniles. There are people who defend things that happened years ago, making the past a priority over the meeting taking place or the need for improvement going forward. I've received unprofessional emails defending things I disagree with. And the best was when recently somebody sent me two anonymous text messages. "People should have a higher value for their jobs since these incidences violated privacy laws." It wasn't hard to figure out the source of these text messages, so they should be very thankful that I didn't make a big issue of it within the district, chose not to call them up in the middle of the night, or have a robodiler consistently call the number. If you haven't figured it out after all this time, I am relentless. So we can either agree to disagree or talk about it respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
One second, please.
Second.
Discussion on any item? Seeing none, this is a roll call action.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Witt?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Laverty?
Aye.
President Meisterling?
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to have Carla come up and talk about our Pro Start culinary program.
I'm excited to introduce Joan Steckel and several of her students who have volunteered their time to come out on a cold night to be here. And Joan is a teacher in our Pro Start culinary program. It's a new program this year. It was, we renovated a classroom at Washington High School. It's open to anybody in our district, and the classroom is a commercial-grade kitchen, so it's more than what we would consider a home ec classroom. These students will be ready to enter into a culinary program when they leave, possibly enter the workforce at an advantage. And I'm going to stop talking so they can talk and tell you about it much better than I can. So, thank you for coming.
Everyone has to step up to the microphone.
Now, one, two, three, and four. Everybody do the mambo on the floor. Swing your body and shake the hips. College and career readiness.
Pro Start opportunities, competitions, articulations, certifications.
We'll do the mambo a little bit more.
Math skills, workplace skills, teamwork skills, chef's hat, black pants, chef's coats.
Now, one, two, three, four. Everybody do the mambo on the floor. Swing the body and shake the hips. College and career readiness. Pro Start opportunities. A little bit of mambo, one, two, three. More career exploration for me.
We hope we've put you in the mood to hear a little bit more about Pro Start. Pro Start, Feeding Dreams, Building Futures. The Pro Start program is a two-year, industry-based program that prepares students for careers in the restaurant and food industry, food service industry. Students gain valuable restaurant and food service skills through academic and workplace experiences. The program prepares students for the adult working world, offering them job experiences before they graduate.
How many of you have worked in a restaurant in an entry-level job? About 10% of all jobs in our country in restaurant industry, this is an industry of opportunities.
Do you know how many community colleges offer hospitality and management programs in Iowa? Oh, do you know what it is?
Kirkwood and T-Mac?
Well, there's a lot more. There's around seven, actually. But at least you knew them. I mean...
Does anyone know how many Pro Start schools there are in Iowa?
Hmm, I don't know that.
One.
There's 19. Do any four-year schools offer hospitality and management programs in Iowa?
Yes. Yeah.
Iowa State, nine and a half credits related to Pro Start article from DMAC to Iowa State. Pro Start equals professional start.
What skills will you have when you finish this course?
Knife cuts, as in julienne, batonnet, chiffonnade, and boussoir, and others. Those are the names.
Knowledge of an ability to use commercial equipment, for example, three-compartment sink, commercial dish machine griddles, knowledge of pan materials and heat transfer hot spots and what heats more evenly. You will gain teamwork skills, being able to work with others, and compromise to solve Math skills, costing recipes, wire displacement measuring method, edible portion versus as purchased amount, weighing on a spring scale, converting recipes, amounts served, et cetera. Food safety techniques, knowledge steps to sanitizing colored equipment, hay cap, thermometers, calibration, et cetera.
Food prep techniques, poaching, braising, making crosshatch marks, sauteing, dry heat and versus moist heat, et cetera.
Knife care, cleaning, honing, types of knives and their uses. Workplace safety, types of fires and fire extinguishers, how to use a fire extinguisher, OSHA, how to properly lift, MSDS, sheets, et cetera.
Here are the top 10 reasons we think students should take Pro Start.
Reason number 10 is competition, state and international.
Reason number nine, fun. Get to use knives, work with fire. That's a big one. And use chemicals. But seriously, working with others, guest speakers, as in this, field trips, presentations, pulling up the skin on a whole bird to rub it, and roasting peppers, et cetera.
Reason number eight is you can eat what you cook.
Fabricating a chicken, putting crosshatch marks on a burger, demonstrating various knife cuts, like julienne, using a steel to straighten the feathers on a knife, using the three-compartment sink correctly, clarified butter, poaching a white egg, making chicken stock from leftovers after refabricating a chicken.
Reason number six, you get to dress like a professional. You get to wear chef jackets, hat, and apron.
Reason number five, scholarships, National Restaurant Association, Iowa Restaurant Association, culinary schools from across the U.S., and culinary competitions. Reason number four for articulation, no cost, and you get credit for classes. DMAC gives nine and a half credits for the entire Pro Start program. It's linked to post-secondary programs across the U.S. and requires collaboration with post-secondary and industry partners.
Reason number three, certifications, which is a third-party testing protocol program. So it says that we have relevancy, accountability. It's a standardized testing process. Some students may earn more money than a bachelor recipient would because they have a specific set of skills. Pro Start certification, the certification is national, and that means that colleges and universities accept Pro Start for credit. And then SERVESAFE certification, the Iowa Food Code as of January 2014 requires every food establishment in Iowa to have a Certified Food Protection Manager. SERVESAFE is a primary certification used by hospitality establishments across the country to meet food code requirement of, quote, "Certified Food Protection Managers." It's valid for five years. We had five students take the SERVESAFE test and two passed right away, and I think that there's two more that are going to retake it. The grant money through Perkins will pay for the student's certification if they pass that test, so looks awesome on a resume.
College and career readiness. Increase your marketability. Reinforces academic skills related to hospitality careers. Provides competitive edge for students entering workforce immediately. Alignment to labor market. And reason number one, you get to prep for future career or the opportunity to explore career options and develop academic and workplace skills. Prepare students for most post-secondary education and employment. Classroom instruction, hand-on lab work, and on-the-table training that address different
Pro Start is a career development tool.
Pro Start: Feeding Dreams, Building Futures. Thank you.
Wow.
Either introduce yourself, or you want to introduce your students?
I'm John Wilcox.
You can say why you're in the program, or what you're getting out of it, or what you like.
Well, I joined the program because I've always loved to cook. Second, I mean, getting more of an experience helps you with your job. I was one of the two students to actually pass the little certification test. And I feel like if I got that on my resume, I'll get better jobs, obviously a better pay. I mean, at least I have some experience. And you learn a lot more that you didn't know. Like, I learned a lot about sanitation.
Thank you.
I'm Mackenzie Maddox, and I joined Pro Start because I like to cook also, and I just like being around food. And it helps me, like, to get, for the night, can get a better job and have it on my resume.
Thank you.
I'm Andrea Holt, and I joined because I like to cook, and I'm actually planning on being a chef, so...
Thank you.
I'm Heaven McIntosh. I'm a sophomore at Wash. I did Pro Start because you can learn more about the food industry, like, it's more than just what you're cooking. You can get deeper into it, and you just, it puts you above some other people.
My name is Ashley Ulrich. I'm a senior at Wash, and I joined Pro Start because I love to cook and I love to eat. And, yeah, I wanted to further my education a little bit more in cooking.
Great.
I think it would be interesting for our audience to know that our students prepared a little treat for the school board members. Very tasty. We really appreciate it and want to extend our thanks for your generosity and hospitality. So thank you.
I'd like to say too, Amanda Brown, the dietitian, that's where I went. She was my go-to person for a suggestion on a nutritious snack.
Members can't hold their plates up because they're empty. Okay, comments and questions from the board. Thank you so much. Yes?
Thank you again for the presentation, and it was very tasty. It made me hungry. It was a great appetizer. How many students are currently in the program?
I think 10 are right now. I think the maximum class is 10 or 12 because it's like a kitchen and you can only have so many in at a time, but, yeah, it's worth it.
I have a question.
Yes.
We have, I would just say, there's 10 in the class this year. It's the very first time this trimester. When the program was set up, though, there was room for 24 students.
So...
Is there an application process? Do you have to fill out anything in order to participate?
Students have to have had the Foods One or Intro Foods class, so they have some basics in math. And I think maturity is an important, because it's not just cooking. The SERVESAFE program is sort of tedious and not always really exciting because there's a lot of, you know, a lot of science and, you know, with just some of the sanitation things. So maturity would be very important, and a desire, just being open to trying new things and, you know, having a positive attitude. So...
John?
Is there coordination with the Kirkwood Culinary Program in this, or how does that work?
I think that came through in our presentation. Kirkwood, I think they've been supportive. They're not necessarily...
Sure.
Really vocal about it. I think they're kind of waiting to see what kind of students we're producing because they have, you know, a certain quality that they're looking for, and I think they just want to see, you know, if that's what we're going to produce. It's all about standards. There's all kinds of competencies. And so I think that there'll be a relationship at some point in time, but they just kind of want to see, you know, if we're meeting their level of...
Sure. Sounds like an opportunity there.
It does. Yes, it does. Alan maybe can assist us in that regard. Keith?
Excuse me, is this a multi-year program, or is it one course?
The Pro Start Program, the National Restaurant Association runs the curriculum. There's a Pro Start Level 1, a Pro Start Level 2, and there's an internship piece to it. And so I know that we've introduced it to all three schools because this was our pilot year. And so we're hoping that Kennedy and Jefferson are going to, you know, be getting everyone excited about coming over to Wash and participating in the program. But right now, it's double-blocked because we're on a trimester, so it's two periods. So these guys, I have students that have to take early bird classes so that they can make the Pro Start fit into their schedule. So they get 10 credits because it's two blocks on the trimester. But there's Pro Start 1, 2, and the internship piece. That's where the nine and a half credits come to be.
I just had a few comments. It would be nice if you had a school garden, and you took the produce from your garden and used that in your kitchen, so you might want to keep that in mind. I also, last year, I think I shared with the board that I participated in a hamburger tasting contest as a judge. And I don't know if any of you were there last year, but the scoring sheet did have crosshatch marks presentation. I was very impressed with all of it, and everything was delicious. And lastly, I'd like to see you, I watch a lot of the Food Network channel because I like food as well and I like to cook. And they do host occasionally throughout the year, student competitions. And so I'd like to see some of our students participate in that. So Joan, I'll leave that up to you to get them on that show. No tall order at all. Thank you so much. This is a terrific program. Thank you for sharing your time. Mary Ellen, tell us about teacher leadership and compensation supplement.
You know, Dr. Benson's always told me, you don't want to follow kids, and you don't want to follow animals, like he mentioned earlier. Well, we've had preschoolers and kindergartners, and now people that can cook much better than I can. So, but here it goes. Teacher leadership and compensation. It's my pleasure to share with you tonight an opportunity that we have had in the district over the past six months, and we've been engaged in this wonderful opportunity to create a teacher leadership system for our district. Tonight, what I'm going to do is just share the vision for teacher leadership in the Cedar Rapids Community School District, the process that was used to develop the plan, the systemic approach that we have created to enhance both teacher and student learning. Go ahead, Justin. So you are aware, because I've mentioned it before, actually, I shared with you about six months ago, that we were going to have the opportunity to create a systemic plan for our district for teacher leadership. And that's part of the Teacher Leadership and Compensation Supplement, House File 215 that came out of the legislation during the 2013 legislative session. So what that basically was, is that each school district in the state would have the opportunity over the next three years to create and submit a teacher leadership plan to the state. And if you look at this slide, it indicates that one-third of those applications would be approved the first year, which will be for the next school year, one-third the following year, and one-third the following year. Well, we didn't waste any time or let any grass grow under our feet. We quickly got to work to develop our teacher leadership and compensation plan for the Cedar Rapids School District. It was submitted on January 30th, and it is my understanding that 146 districts in the state, which is about 40% of the districts in the state, representing 67% of the students in the state, submitted plans. So the TLC, or the Teacher Leadership Supplement, will be funded based on one-third of the students in the state the first year, one-third of the students in the state the second year, and one-third of the students in the third year. So we know that two-thirds of the students are represented in the upcoming year, so that gives us about a 50/50 chance of receiving the funds for next school year. And we're hopeful that we will receive those funds. It is approximately $5 million in funding. Okay? When we originally started our work, there were three models to choose from, and we thought, wow, we have such, have had such good luck with our instructional coach model at the elementary level. Let's go ahead and use the instructional coach model. What we found is that with the comparable plan model that you see on the slide, we would be able to expand the opportunities beyond that coach model and look at a wide range of leadership opportunities for the teachers in our district. So we did choose a comparable plan model. If you look at the five must-haves that the state indicated, we already had the first bullet, which is a $33,500 compensation for our teachers. We have an induction and mentoring program currently in place that is a high-quality program. So those first two bullets were in place already for us. And then if you look at the next bullet, this was the one that we really said we wanted to focus on, the differentiated multiple meaningful teacher leadership roles. So we wanted it to be that it wasn't just a release model, such as an instructional coach who is not in the classroom. We wanted opportunities for teachers as extra-duty contracts, as a part-time position in a leadership position, and a leadership position perhaps that was outside of coaching and in professional learning. So what we ended up with was, I think, a very differentiated plan. And you'll see as I move through the presentation that we have a lot of opportunities for teachers to engage themselves in teacher leadership opportunities with this plan. The other two components, the rigorous selection process and the aligned professional development, became part of what we think is a very systemic approach to teacher leadership for our district. Go ahead, Justin. The application process, I want to talk about this because I have been engaged in a lot of wonderful processes over my career in education, but I would have to say that the advisory committee, which was composed of 26 members, teachers, parents, community members, administrators, CREA leadership, several of the people in the CREA board, and even the UNISERV director from, that works with CREA, was on our committee. It was a very collaborative and purposeful approach to working through this. We had, like I said, a lot of people involved, but they were very, very task-oriented. They did not let us pass over one thing. There was many, many opportunities for teacher input. One of the things that we did, I did it actually with one of the CREA members... One of the things that we did, I did it actually with one of the CREA members, Ray Foyce, he and I created a video that was available and viewed by all of our teaching staff. And as you'll see from the slide on the stakeholder input, we had 798 responses from our first survey that we administered to our teachers. And what we learned from the teachers during that process is that many of them had had opportunities in Cedar Rapids to be in a leadership role. So we were, what I would say is we were very rich in teacher leadership opportunities, but what we did lack was a systemic approach to those teacher leadership opportunities. The other thing that I thought was very impressive is that 79% of our teachers would consider a teacher leadership role in the future. And I think that's just to be applauded, that we have teachers that are that interested in teacher leadership, but also the fact that their professional growth is that important to them. The second survey we administered, there was 502 responses and teachers helped us with questions about the rigorous selection process, those criteria that we needed to meet. What would the selection process be like? And the other thing was what are the qualities that we should be looking for in teacher leaders? So the advisory committee and then the leadership team, which is a smaller team, all of those members were on the advisory committee, we spent the last five or six months working together to create what we thought was a cohesive plan for teacher leadership with multiple entry points for teachers irregardless of where they were in their career. And I think it's a very high-quality plan and I'll talk a little bit about it more in the next slide. So this slide, and it has a lot of print on it, I know that, I hope you can see some of those bolded, the bolded information. This slide identifies what the vision is for the teacher leadership and compensation plan. So on that slide, I think one of the things that, I'm going to take this straight from the narrative that was in our application and our application was 27 pages long, so I didn't give you each a copy this evening, but you did get it previously in an email from Laurel, I know. The goal of our plan is to provide all teachers with multiple opportunities to hone their exceptional instructional skills while learning and practicing strategies to bring out the best in their colleagues. And in these goals, it talks about the, many of the things that I've talked about. I think the second bullet, we would like all of our teachers to have at least one leadership role when they're in the Cedar Rapids Community School District. I thought that was very impressive. That was a priority for the teachers and for the members of our committee. The other thing that I thought was important is compensating for all those teacher leadership roles. We currently have teachers doing a lot of things in leadership and they don't receive additional pay for them. So as you'll see, we have done that. The other thing is professional development for all of the people that are in that plan. And we have talked about what we would do first and we need to, we know we need to hit the ground running if we receive the funding. And what we call training for everyone in the teacher leadership plan will be kind of basic training and then there would be training specific to those different job descriptions. Okay, go ahead, Justin. So the teacher leadership application had many, many parts to it and I think the thing that we found as we went through some of the sections, you saw the process for planning, that was what I described to you with the two committees that worked on that, the vision I just shared with you, the relationship to district goals, I'm just going to touch on a couple of these, I'm not going to go through all of them. The relationship to district goals, one of the things that was most impressive as we look at our three broad district goals of closing the achievement gap, professional learning community implementation, and quality of instruction, it made our job very easy when we were writing the application. Because our goals are so focused on student learning and high-quality instruction in classrooms. So I'd like to applaud the board for helping us with that vision and saying that as we wrote, we were just, it kind of, just kind of flowed naturally with those goals. Another one is the mentoring and induction, Part Four, which I mentioned that we already have in place, multiple meaningful leadership roles. Justin, I'm going to have you flip to the next slide so that we can look at the number of roles that we have. So there are 44 different leadership roles or positions that are part of the plan. We broke them into three different groups and in those three different groups is, Level One would be the most intensive and that would be the coaching that's going on at the building level. Level Two was a lot of the work that would be done in this building with the professional learning, professional development, curriculum facilitators, technology integration into our curriculum. And that was 41 positions. And then Level Three, building, the building-based support. And as you can see on that one, that's 683 positions. Those would be, are like our PBIS leaders, our building leadership teams or BLTs, you hear us refer to them sometimes. Those are those positions. So the main impetus for us was to, if you look at that, we moved from 268 paid positions to 882 paid positions. You had to include at least one-fourth of your teaching force in the application. One-fourth of our teaching force is approximately 400 teachers. No, I'm sorry, 300 teachers. So we surpassed that greatly and again, the other thing was to make our coaching model that we currently have primarily at the elementary level into Element PK through 12. So we will have coaches at the middle schools and high schools as well. And then the last bullet there is that moving to a systemic approach for professional learning. We feel that we have a lot of opportunities for professional learning, but it's not a systemic approach at this point in time. So this gave us the opportunity to create an awesome plan that does have all of those things aligned. Now, you want to flip back to the slide before? Thank you. And so Part Seven, Eight, and Nine really talked about our ability to have a positive impact on both teaching and learning. And the measures that we have, you had to write in quite a bit as far as measuring the success of the teacher leaders in their position with the tools that we will use for that and then also monitoring your student learning to see if it's having a positive impact on student learning. In addition, we had to identify how we would sustain these efforts in future years. And one of the things that I think has been a priority for our district as can be evidenced in the fact that we've had budget reductions over the past several years, we've maintained those teacher leadership positions because they are so valuable to our district. And again, I want to thank you for that because I think it's important that we could put that in our application to say, our district prides itself in teacher leadership opportunities and these jobs are very important to us and as we've made reductions, we have not reduced those. And then the last section was just the budget. And the budget, again, it's approximately $5 million. And the thing that I would say that was very positive about that is all of those funds are going to teachers. It's not like we're going to spend money on building a facility for it. We have the facility. We have a lot of things in place. So all of the money in this TLC application will go for salary and benefits for our teachers. Okay, next slide. Next slide. I'm just going to end with a quote that we actually used that we think is very representative of the work that we did to create our plan. And it was kind of funny, I shared it with one of our other cabinet members that wasn't part of our team and she said, boy, I'd love to work in this district, after she read it. It's a great plan. So we just are going to keep our fingers and our toes crossed between now and March, sometime in March. It's a date that's out there that we really don't know, but please know that if we get the funding, we will start working on it immediately. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm trying to figure out how to cross my toes.
Oh, you can do it, Mary. Take your shoes off first.
Comments or, okay, comments or questions from the board? John?
Just a question about this model. Does it pull teachers from the classroom to get to this development stage? I mean, I'm always concerned about, you know, that we get to a model where we're putting substitute teachers or other fixes in and pulling our certified teachers out of the classroom too much.
In some cases it will. In the example of an instructional coach at the high school level, what those would look like, it would be .4 in the classroom and .6 at this building. So that would be a partial. Another role that we have, like the PBIS leader, BLT, people on the BLT, the answer to that is no. There are many just extra service contracts that are part of it. And another example would be, one of them that I think is especially exciting is we have demonstration teachers. And those teachers would be in the classroom full-time, but other teachers could come and observe in their classrooms. So the answer to your question is yes and no. In some situations it will and I think what we have is a full spectrum of what teachers, they can kind of pick and choose from those positions as far as, you know, there are some that are 100% of time out of the classroom, there are some that are 0% of time out of the classroom, and a broad range in between.
Great, thank you.
Okay, other comments or questions?
I have one question. As usual, this idea of doing a project like this with leadership, what's the long-term plan? Five years from now, I mean, how do we sustain this thing? Because that seems like it's going to be gone and we're going to say to ourselves, where do we come up with the sustainability of a plan like this?
It's my understanding that the legislature committed to this at least for the next three years and I don't know anything beyond that. I'm looking at Dr. Benson to see if he knows any more than that.
Well, one could never make a commitment for a future legislature, but we believe that currently if this program produces the kinds of student learning results that we believe we will, that this has the momentum to stay. This is $150 million that is being put into the school districts across the state that sits outside the formula, so it's, it should be there year after year.
Good question. Gary?
When you were talking about the, some of the positions would be released, it would be four tents at the high school, I think, you mentioned. Then will we as a district have to pick up that additional, will the grant pay for that additional staffing then that we'll have to incur? If we're taking a teacher out of the classroom for tents, I mean, six tents?
Yeah. There's some pretty close guidelines on how the budget can be used and we can only use the portion of funding from the TLC for the leadership position. So for example, if a teacher is a .6 instructional coach, we would pay for .6 of their salary out of the TLC funds, that supplement, and the other .4 then would come from our general fund.
And just a comment that it looks like a very detailed, well-put-together plan with a lot of work that went into it. Certainly hope we'll keep our fingers and toes crossed, congratulate on the collaboration and the work that you did putting it together.
Yeah, it was really a great process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next I'm going to turn this over to Dave Benson and Steve Graham to talk about the property on Worcester Road Northwest.
Yeah, excuse my phone. I've got the emergency phone, so I left it on tonight. And I keep looking at it and they're not emergencies, so. Excuse me. We have two public hearings to schedule this evening. One is Worcester Road property that we are agreeing to sell to the county for the expansion of their maintenance and operations facility. And the second is to set a hearing for the sale of the Lincoln School. Regarding the second matter, I would say that I am very pleased that we have this offer. You may recall before winter break, we had a discussion around whether or not we would have to raise that school because we weren't getting any interest in it. That spurred several things that our real estate agent followed up on and I think I said at the time, it's not my preference to raise it, but I'd rather have it put back to a good community use and we have that coming forward. So we need to schedule those two hearings. Mr. Graham, do you have additional comments?
I don't have additional comments. We do have, we do have a representative, President Karl Hopp. This is just approval to schedule the public hearings.
Okay. Can I put these two together, Laurel? Absolutely. So it's recommended that the board of, I'm sorry, Keith?
I have a couple of questions on the county parcel. One is, is who's paying for the abstracting and the plating of this parcel? I assume it is the county.
The county is paying all costs.
So they're paying all costs. Another is, is consideration of some limitations of use if they start storing pesticides or whatever, that, we have some wording in there somewhere that there can be a toxin that would affect a school that we would have there, you know? I understand fuels and so on because there's regulations on that, but just some wording to consider on it. And the final one is, is like Lincoln School, if that is ever to be disposed of, that parcel and it's a maintenance facility, that we have some ability to, to direct, you know, that they, that we be considered first right of refusal or something at such time that they would go to sell it, you know, since it is a part of our parcel and within a certain time period. And so I don't want to restrict it too much, but I think since it's part of our parent track, we need to be careful what we're doing and for what might happen in the future.
I did provide a response of delight. Because it does take a notch out of our continuous property.
Gary?
My question would be that by selling the three acres, will this have any effect on the possibilities that we can use the land? I know by code, I believe, to have a, an elementary school, you need so much space. To have a middle school, so much space. Would this, would this reduce the footprint to a point where we wouldn't have the ability to do either an elementary or middle school?
Right. In my experience, the answer would be no. Even a ranch-style, which would be a single-level elementary and middle school, would fit on the remaining site. The remaining site is a very good building site, fairly flat, has good elements to it. The issue that I brought up early on with the county that is that they're going to put a road access in so that in the future, when we develop, we'll have a good access point to come into the site that won't conflict with rules and regulations of the city in terms of how many break points you can have in a distance. So we'll have a good point to be able to enter into the property. So we think that's a plus to this site location.
Thank you.
Okay. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the resolution to schedule a public hearing on February 24th, 2014 regarding the sale of district property located 80th Street and Worcester Road Northwest as well as Lincoln School property. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. And seeing no other business before this board, we stand adjourned. Thank you.[1743.75]